Okay, we are recording. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting for the town of Lodi for March. First up, if we can say the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Thanks, everybody.
Is that Lee? Is that you?
Hi, Lee.
That's the audience today. Good to see you, Lee.
Good to see you.
Oh, hi, Lee.
Hello.
Feel like I should give him the big chair. Hi, Art. Welcome. Good to see you, Art.
Hey, Art.
All right, Connie, can you give us a roll call, please?
Supervisor Barnhart.
Here.
Deputy Supervisor Latini.
Here.
Councilman Sibley.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
I said hello to Councilman Batman and Frank Fisher, Attorney of Law.
We're here.
Thank you, Connie. We do have a period here for public comment. I think we do have a couple of guests tonight. Would anybody like to have the floor? We'll have more opportunity as the night goes on as well. Hi, Mary. How are you?
Hi, good.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, hello. I'm not staying. I'm eating.
I got a half a slice of pizza next to me, but I won't tell anyone.
Good.
All right, hearing no public comment, we'll move on to the agenda. I have one. I've sent out the agenda to everybody. I'm gonna post it in the chat room here in case anybody from the audience would like to... Think I'm gonna do that? Yes, there we go. In case anybody in the audience would like to look at it. I'd like to add one thing to the agenda. I'd like to add a resolution to ask our town attorneys to move forward in preparing for the abandonment of Ames Road and Cat's Elbow. Does anybody take issue with that? I mean, we can have the discussion later on, but I'd just like to add the agenda.
Ames and Cat?
Right. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. ... All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda accepted. Here is the agenda in the chat box if you care to follow along. Up next, we need to approve the meeting minutes.
Kyle.
Yes, Connie.
Kyle. At the request of Councilman Thomas, I had left out where Seneca Meadows applied to the D E C to extend their operations another 15 years, which was in direct conflict. I would like to add that to the minutes as an edit. And second request was during the Ags and Environment Report, the number I wrote was incorrect. It is 139 million gallons of water per day. So those two edits to the minutes.
Thank you, Connie. I appreciate that. With the...
That's good work.
With the edits proposed by the town clerk, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Batman. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any... Motion carried. Minutes accepted. Moving on to pay the bills. Mr. Batman and I were in the room before anybody else joined, and he identified a couple of bills that he had questions about. One was a very good catch. We generally pay the ambulance quarterly, but the ambulance has been voucher for both their first quarter payment and the remainder of the payments. So voucher number three on the general fund is for $60,000 to the ambulance. I'd like to set that aside and not pay that tonight and continue with the quarterly payments. Outside of that, I feel pretty good about the bills. Oh, I did send you the detailed invoice for the fuel. That was a high bill. And what was the other bill that you asked about?
Oh, it was just the heat. I didn't... I didn't see what... There was no reference to the amount of time it was. You told me it was for several months.
Yeah. Yeah, that was for several months. So I'll make the motion to approve the bills. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second from Mr. Batman. A little background noise from somebody here, so I might start muting at will. Any discussion on the bills? Any questions?
I... Who was the second on that? I'm sorry. Can't hear well.
Paul.
Paul, right?
Yeah.
Is somebody...
I was able to identify the background noise and mute the person responsible, so no worries. First and second, I don't hear any discussion. All those in favor of paying the bills, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Bill's paid. Motion carried. Connie, do you have Rick Jacob there with you tonight?
I do, of course.
Would he like to give us a...
Yeah, I did a little plowing sanding through the winter. We had to repair the 5500 Ben Hall and R O C N for South Miller and Rhodes Road to finish up them two projects, service the equipment, and did some repairs on the O6. That's about it.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody have questions for Rick tonight? All right, I'll move to accept the highway report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Latini, I believe. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
Oh, one more thing. That new truck's just waiting for one more cable, and then they'll deliver it, that little truck, so.
Great. Great, great. Connie, do you have a town clerk report for us tonight?
I do. Town clerk report, monies remitted from Judge Van Cleef, $2,448. Monies remitted to Ags and Market, $12. Monies to supervisor and certified copies, $102. And for clerk fees, an additional $82. As far as tax collection, the supervisor has been paid in full. We have made our second payment. By the end of this week, I believe, we'll have our third payment to the county. First payment to the county, $52,421. The second payment was $400,000. We owe them a remainder balance at this point of $504,000. 100... I'm sorry, $504,193. With that being said, and only having two weeks really left to collect, I'm not sure what our end interest rates are going to look like. We had an outstanding January, and I think that's where it comes from. As far as town hall in office, on Monday, the 8th, we did go through our annual audit. That was for the court clerk and myself. Of course, Yvonne's was completely well. My tax collection was pristine, but I have some work to do in the town clerk's office. I had a small accumulated value, a little under $100, left in my account of unallocated funds. That is a clerical error, as I was not using the Williams Law Program to its complete capabilities. And I was not individually input in certified copies. So it wasn't registering as an allocation. It just accumulated for that year. Took them a little time to figure it out, but I believe that it has been resolved. With that being said, I did reach out, and I have some sources that we are gonna do some training on that Williams Law Program. I would like to use that at its full capacity. In addition to that, I got a call from Five Star Bank. I have not made a decision yet. I want to bring it to the board if this is something we want to do for the town or not. I'm waiting to make the decision until I get a pamphlet, some type of contract, until I understand and complete. Thursday, I got a random call from Five Star Bank. I've been in the works with the vice president of the bank on different issues, and they had called me, and they had offered the town of Lodi a complete check scan and system. They have offered my office the equipment and the service for free. We just have to accept it. I think that there's benefits to this. It cuts back on mileage, things that could happen transporting that... Those funds when they are in hand. But I do have concerns that if the system fails, are we hindering our tax collection process as we know it? And so does anybody have any input or feeling on that about going completely depositless with the equipment, banking equipment in office?
I'd just like to know a little bit more. You're working with Karen Stevens, I'm assuming?
Correct, and Jessica.
Know a little bit more about what the process is and if it works for, you know, just the clerks.
I don't think it's been offered. I don't think it's really been offered like that. I'm not exactly sure. That was to my understanding. They have just decided that they're offering it to us. So I will have a contract and a pamphlet, but...
Yeah, I mean, for me, I'd like to talk to Karen and look at some materials to see what it involves, because we have multiple different departments and bank accounts, so it might be a little nuanced.
No, this is just for tax collection.
Okay.
It's not a service for the town. It's specifically for tax collection. It would not affect anybody else's funds, deposits. You would have to do it exactly the way you have done it. It's not a group-type thing to my understanding, but I need better understanding myself. So I agree. We need to look into it.
Why don't you and I talk to Karen here over the next couple of weeks and get some more details?
Perfect.
Cool. Anybody else have any input on that? Hearing none. Is that anything else for your report, Connie?
I think it sums it up, other than we have a new phone system, internet system, and new server, different equipment. Everything has been upgraded in the last couple of weeks. It's amazing that the equipment works as it should.
That's awesome. Yeah, we've... I don't know if the rest of the board knows, but we've had a ton of issues with the phones. Connie, what did they end up finding out that it was? Was it animals up there with the wires?
That's correct. It's embarrassing, but yeah, that's what happened.
That's a...
They ate them.
Building. What can you do? What can you do? Well, thank you, Connie. We appreciate it. I'll move to accept the town clerk report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Batman, do you have a library report for us tonight?
A very brief one, just because I can't find the written report. But I do know that they just got a new storage shed installed, which has been on the... Well, it's been on the agenda for years. But just, we had to come up... They spent all the money that was available through the different grants and contributions at one point. And then we just had to build it back up again. They had the money to buy one of the Amish storage sheds that is now in place and will be very useful, because there's not a lot of storage space in the library. So that was good. Everything else is pretty much operating as it has been. And that's about it.
Great. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Thomas, anything on the agriculture, environment, or infrastructure front?
Do have three things. So the first one is from the Seneca County Department of Planning and Community Development. Actually, got this from Connie, sent over. It's a letter from the County Board of Supervisors, and it's a period where they're receiving requests from landowners who want to put their land, agricultural land, into certified agricultural districts. Most farmland in Seneca County is already in a district, but if you have land that's been put back in production, you might want to add a request to have it added to an existing district. And in order to do that, you can paper or email copies from... Request the form from County Department of Planning and Community Development at H H A Y N E S at C O dot Seneca dot N Y dot U S. And the phone number is 315-539-1723. That's the longest part here. The second one is also having to do with Seneca County Water Conservation District. They're doing their tree and shrub seedling sale, as they do every year. You can go to their website and print out one of their forms. They've got a couple of different varieties of trees this year. The order deadline is Friday, April 9th, 2020, or 2021. So I know a lot of people do that around here. Just a reminder for everybody, it's a good way to get a lot of trees in the ground cheaply. And the last thing was I attended, I guess, a webinar on solar farms a couple of weeks ago, kind of to get some more information based on the... I guess the solar farm that may or may not be going in Lodi. And I guess... So this webinar was kind of hosted by someone who had gone through a similar thing, where the community had to deal with solar farms being put in. And I guess it's kind of a big deal right now with the New York State's push to go heavy renewables. These solar farms are kind of a quick and easy way to meet that goal. And unfortunately, the easiest way for them to do that is to use open land and cover it with solar panels. And if the owner of the property wants to do that, or they sell it to one of these solar farms, there's nothing a town can do unless they have some kind of comprehensive plan, planning laws, zoning laws in... On the books already that could prohibit the development of a project like this, if that's the writing of law. So it's... There's not much that Lodi can do unless we want the planning committee to focus on this, and it's a big issue. I don't know. This is the first thing I've heard about. You know, that's a pretty sizable farm going in in the town. And I don't know that there may not be more down the road, because it is... There is kind of a push to get a lot of solar farms up and running. So, yeah, I guess this is to inform the public that pay attention to the solar farms. And then if people are really want to try to be proactive about this, then I think it's up to the planning board to get some kind of... Some kind of comprehensive plan that includes stuff like this. And I would say just against solar farms, like any kind of development that the town doesn't really want. So there is... I guess you can... What is it? New York State Agriculture and Markets can be the project. If it's receiving a subsidy from a New York funding agency, that was the only loophole that could possibly stop a project, but that's only if it's getting funding from a New York agency. So I guess there's some digging to be done about, like, the company that wants to put it in. But if it's a private landowner that's just doing it, there's really not much that we can do about it. So that's all.
Great. Thank you. Good information, as always. I will ask that you don't cuss during our meetings. You did say the Z-word, and I don't think people appreciate that around here. All right.
I guess this is... It was said so many times during that webinar. I wrote it down and didn't even think about it.
Fair enough. Well, you're forgiven this time, so.
Guys, I have a silly question. What was the C-word? I didn't catch it.
It's the Z-word, zoning.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, yes. All right.
Moving on, Paul, do you have anything on the economic development, planning, and tourism front?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Latini, anything on finance and federal affairs?
Um, I do not.
And Mr. Sibley, anything government ops or criminal justice related?
Uh, no.
Okay. I do have a building committee update. We have a piece of news. The State Supreme Court has signed off on the sale. So that leaves us really with one last hurdle to finalize the sale, unless Mr. Fisher tells me otherwise. We need to negotiate the lease between the town and the food pantry nonprofit organization. And when we do that, then the Presbyterian will sign off on their end of the sale, having the town have met their obligation to allow the continued operation of the pantry. So that's really all that's in our way. I have spent the last two or three days in some loose negotiations with the pantry establishment. Marty Mazzinski, a Lodi resident, is leading those negotiations on the pantry side. To me, it's... We're pretty close. I think the next step that we're gonna do is myself and Luke will join probably our attorney and Marty as the pantry rep, and then the pantry's attorney, and we'll sort of conference to finalize this lease and get it done. Outside of that, Seth, do I have anything else on the building committee I'm forgetting?
Uh, no. I was wondering about the legal stuff. So you explained that was... Yeah, that's... Nothing else has changed.
Okay. Yeah, we have not met as a building committee for over a month, because we're sort of in a holding pattern, waiting to close before we can take the next steps. So and the next steps would be hiring an architect and getting on with the show. And then I do have water committee on the committee reports. There is no town movement on water whatsoever. Everything is in the village's hands. The village has applied for a planning grant for water, and they expect to receive that. Also, the village and the town, but the village in particular, will be receiving money from the Senate and Congressional Democrats that passed the COVID Relief Act, and that's gonna provide direct money to municipalities. The town of Lodi is scheduled to receive $170,000 from that bill. They haven't released the village numbers yet, but they did tie some strings to how you can spend that money, and one of the ways was directly on water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So I expect the village has a really nice head start to their water project. That concludes the committee reports tonight. Up next, the county board report and supervisors' remarks. I do have some remarks here. There's not too much Lodi-related news coming out of the county lately. However, we do have the county's sale of the 58-acre parcel of land on Katy Road moving along. Five bids were made on the property. From here, the bids will go to the County Public Works Committee for vetting, and then on to the full Board of Supervisors for a vote to award the property to one of the bidders. I am not sure on the timeline, but an approval of a bid by the full board could come as soon as our next Board of Supervisors meeting on April 13th. We have committee meetings the last Thursday of the month, or Tuesday of the month, and then our regular meeting will be the second Tuesday in April. And I expect that we might have some... In other news, there are a few of us supervisors continuing to make a push to have better geographical representation on some of the important decision-making boards across the county, led by Chairman Bob Heisen from Verrick. We've been able to place quite a few South County people in key places. Bruce Murray, who owns Boundary Breaks Vineyard in Lodi, is now the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce Board for 2021, and he'll also serve on the Seneca County Industrial Development Agency Board. We have another IDA candidate from the South End coming from Ovid that we hope to appoint at our next meeting. She's the owner of the Big M. So I'm happy to report that we will have a few more voices going forward that are hopefully keeping our interests in mind down here in the South County. Lastly, I've been working on a grant program to be handled on the county level that works from the 10% of the room tax money that the county retains. The other 90% of the room tax money goes to the Chamber of Commerce to promote tourism in the county. So we have passed this grant program, and that allows municipalities, nonprofits, and individuals to apply for grants to assist in attracting visitors, tourists, to Seneca County, and to enhance the overall local tourism industry. These grants can be used for community celebrations, for arts and culture, for promotion and marketing of events, or even capital improvement. While the room tax money that the chamber uses to market the county's tourism appeal is great, I'm really proud to be able to get some of that money from the county going back into local municipalities and creative projects. So if you could, please spread the word about this program. I'm happy to share more details if you'd like them. I think it'd be particularly great if we could get some more nice art and culture projects around town, like the murals on the front of the village hall. But the projects do have to be directly tourism-related to sort of improve the entire tourism program of Seneca County. So that concludes my supervisor's report for this month. I will add that I've renewed my push at the county level to share sales tax. And again, with the bill coming out of Congress, Seneca County is slated to get $6.6 million as part of that, and that will, I think, completely cover the sales tax losses that we experienced in 2020. So county and town looking in very good financial shape for 2021. Does anybody have any questions?
I've got one if I could ask.
Please, sir.
Okay, on the IDA board. I understand that Valerie Bassett resigned from the board, and if I'm mistaken, that she was the only South County member to that board. I think there should be somebody from the South End on that board to represent South County.
We appointed Bruce Murray. Bruce owns a business.
She just said a few minutes ago.
Yep, and then the other woman owns the Big M now. She hasn't been approved yet, but that's gonna be our approach. We looked hard. We asked a lot of people to serve on the IDA board, and it's sort of hard to find folks in the industry, you know? So we're pushing hard, and I'm happy that Chairman Heisen and Joe Borst and, you know, the South County supervisors are pushing for that. I think it's important.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you said earlier about that board.
Was there something in particular you wanted me to follow up on?
No. You answered my question.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't understand what you were saying when you mentioned about the fellow that owns Boundary Breaks.
Yeah. Yeah, so he's taken a pretty active role, both in the chamber now and the IDAs. It's pretty good to see. Any other questions? Very well. Onto old business. Do we have any old business this evening?
Yeah, Kyle, I got two things. One is, I think it was in January, when we were talking about the... Oh, the, like, paybacks for when guys retire from the highway department, trying to put together a secured spot for the town to throw money in there so they don't take initial hit for when it's time for stipends to be paid when those guys retire. You know, just a little bit of an essay to put in there so it doesn't take a hit when 10, 12, 15 years come down the road. Now we get one of our guys or two of our guys decide to retire out, just to have something, to start getting something built. Maybe you talked about it last month's meeting. I don't know. I was out salt in the roads. I missed last month's meeting, but if we don't have something in play, it'd be nice to put something away for that for the days when it comes time for our employees at the highway department to retire. the days when it comes time for our employees at the highway department to retire.
Good call, Trevor. So good discussion item here. We we did agree to change the employee policy to better shape our our town employees incentives to retire with us. And now, you know, Trevor has identified the fact that we have not identified how we're socking that money away just yet. Now, I think we've, you know, we've got plenty of time before anybody retires on us. So, you know, my question would be, is this the sort of thing where we should establish, you know, sort of, and I don't know the technical aspects of what we can do in this realm, but establish a reserve fund, you know, for employee retirement or employee employee pension and add a little bit to it every year, a few hundred bucks or a thousand bucks? Or is this the kind of thing where we identify, you know, an employee is is retiring in five years? You know, here's a an appropriation for the next five years to get whatever level we need to get to 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 pay them off correctly. So I don't know what would be a prudent approach. Does anybody on the board, would anybody like to weigh in?
Yeah, Kyle, I think we put a squirrel away a little bit as we go. That's worked well for it for the bridge fund and etcetera. You don't really miss it because it's a small amount. So it's taxpayer neutral, if you will, and it does accumulate. And it just gives you a lot more maneuvering time. It allows you to budget for it. And it just just makes it easier going. You don't have to in the end to pull from anything else necessarily. You know, to meet a payout.
Great. Thank you, Luke. Mr. Batman or Mr. Thomas, any thoughts?
I like that idea of putting a little bit away. All every time, every month.
Okay, so I think maybe the best way to handle this would be simply to budget it as part of our budget process towards the end of the year. I don't think it requires any immediate action, but you know, we'll keep it in mind as we budget. Does that sound good, Trevor?
Yeah, I just, I was just curious to know other people's thoughts if they have an idea of a a dollar amount that we can set, or is that just something that we want to try to talk about coming towards the tail end of the year to put something away? We just had to make sure we don't forget.
Go ahead, Luke, where are you gonna go?
Yeah, if you could figure out, do an estimation maybe of of what you think those payouts would be based on our current headcount.
Okay.
And get a total and then stack those up, divide by the number of years, and that tells us how much we need to squirrel away.
Okay, I can do that.
Cool. Got plenty of time to address it. That sounds good. Good call, Trevor. Did you have another piece of old business?
Yeah, I do. Um, I don't know, Kyle, if you got involved when the plan for the new box covert replacement down at the foot of Lodi Point Road. That there was a little bit of a setback there because the cost was a little bit more than originally planned because of moving. I believe the last thing that I overheard was moving some the electric had to be moved because when the crane comes to set the box covert, they needed to have the electric out of the way per their span for the crane. So as far as a definitive start date as of yet, I have not heard. I know there's probably been some people wondering what's happening with that. To my knowledge, it's still in limbo right now. And and one other part I heard overheard, depending on when they get this started and get it all figured out is it sounds like they're going to do it towards the less traveled part of the part of the year, you know, so it doesn't put burden coming from the Shaw roadside or the the Lake roadside on people while they're there for the summer months. I think they're going to take that into consideration, but I haven't heard of definitive start day.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Last communication I had was from mid-January, and their anticipated start date was a 60-day build post Labor Day. That was the last thing I heard. They keep me notified, but not necessarily informed, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
If I hear anything more definitive, I will certainly reach out and then definitely get it out there to the public for anybody that's questioning on what's going on.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Trevor regarding the Lower Lake Road Bridge? Very well. Any other old business tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. I have attached a number of resolutions. I think there are three. Let me get them open on my end real quick. First up is to appoint Donna Mott to the Board of Assessment Review. These are five-year terms. That way, I'll make the motion to appoint Donna Mott to the Board of Assessment Review. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second for Mr. Latini and discussion. Donna's term ended last May, and she was not reappointed. I was, though she continues in the role, I was informed by Real Property that she needed to be reappointed, so a little bit of housekeeping. I did reach out to her to confirm her reappointment and did not hear back from her, but I think we should proceed nonetheless. Ann Morgan endorsed her skills in this role, so that is what I have. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. The next resolution is to appoint a town historian. Move to appoint. I have the wrong resolution. Okay, I will move to appoint Robert Mark Brown as town historian. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Sibley and discussion. The town historian position has been vacant since Noel Clausen passed in 2019. Recently, a woman, a journalist, reached out who was writing a story for a magazine called Hoof Beats about a horse from the mid-1800s called Henry Clay VIII. Walt Gable, the county historian, passed on the request to me. I passed it on to Mayor Mike Huff in the village, and from there, it sort of just spread out. Mark Brown, who most of the community knows as the guy who plays the organ at the Historical Society and does the Facebook Live performances. He took it upon himself to do the research and provided a really, really well documented eight or nine-page report on the horse that was, I mean, just exquisitely done, I thought.
14 pages.
What was that?
14 pages.
14 pages, thank you. So I asked a few people if they thought Mark was a good choice for historian, and and it was unanimous. Mike Huff approved, Jim Covert approved. Both of Mark's parents were town historians, so I think it's pretty So with that, I've made, I asked Mark if he was willing to serve, and he was, and I guess I'll open it up to the board for discussion questions. I think the first thing I'd like Mark to work on, which I've already let him know, is we don't have any historical markers in Lodi. And I'd like to identify, I'd like for him to identify a few possible ideas for us to get historical markers, and then we can apply to the Pomeroy Foundation for historical marker grants. So hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, one more. This resolution up next is a bridge appropriation budget modification. I will move this motion to move funds from the reserve fund into the highway fund and then appropriate that into our bridges contractual line item. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Batman, thank you. Discussion. So we have a bridge reserve fund, but we did not appropriate any money in our budget this year to pay for an expected bill. Last year, the Upper Lake Road Bridge over Mill Creek was done, and we have a local match, I believe, of 5%. Initially, that amount was like close to $10,000, and the county, I'm not sure why or how, but they were able to get the the match. I think the the project came in under budget, and they were able to get the match down to us at about 7,500. So we need to move funds from our bridge reserve account and put it into the highway fund, and then we need to appropriate $7,500 into our bridges contractual line so that we can write the check. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Before we get into the discussion for the property tax exemptions, I'd like to move the item that I added to the agenda at the top of the meeting. I'd like to move to direct our town attorney to move forward in preparing any documents or research for the abandonment of Ames Road and the project at Cat's Elbow, which includes the culvert and the surrounding road repairs. So I'll move that. If there's a second, we can enter into some discussion. Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Thomas, thank you. So this was recommended to me this morning by Ryan Freikol, who's our consultant at Municipal Disaster Solutions. We just sort of need to get the process going. When when our projects were initially claimed, the state and the federal government wanted us to have everything completed by April of 2020, excuse me, April of 2021. That's obviously not the case, and everything was delayed because of COVID. But Ryan would like to make sure that we have some of our ducks in a row here as we get closer to that deadline, just so we don't miss anything. So I'd say, I think Frank has done a little bit of initial research and has probably worked on these sorts of things before, but you know, Frank, whatever you can do to get prepared for these two projects to pursue abandonment so that we can repurpose the funds.
We need to keep in mind, Kyle, that that you're going to also need assuming that the highway superintendent can't say that the highway has been completely abandoned and no one uses it anymore. We're going to be working on what's called a qualified abandonment, and that would require the 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 county highway superintendent to also be on board with that. So that's going to be one of the things that we're going to have to have discussions with the county highway department as well.
I beat you to it, Frank. I called Roy Gates today, and he said, no problem. Trying to save us a little money on your end, you know? Fair enough. Do you need any other information or or mandate from us to to do that?
Again, it's it's going to be based upon the opinion of the highway superintendent or superintendents as to the level of use, and it has to, the standard is supposed to be fewer than a day. And if that is the case, then we would need a board resolution following a report by the highway superintendent. And then we would go to the seeking the certification of both the town and the county highway superintendent to the effect that, yes, this is the status of that highway now, and abandonment or qualified abandonment will not work a hardship or injustice on adjoining property owners. And they then would file that certificate with the town clerk and declare it to be a qualified abandoned road. That would be the the thing that basically stops any further town working of the road. It does not stop the the existing public easement over that road, meaning that people can still use it, and the adjoining property owners can't simply take it. They do have certain things under the law that they can do with it, but if they have to make it so that it can still be crossed by the public because that easement is not extinguished by the qualified abandonment process.
Interesting. I think you'll have you've got sort of two two very different situations here. Ames Road is pretty easy. You know, that road is certainly under that threshold for qualified abandonment in terms of traffic. There's one private property owner on that road, and it's a pasture, you know, so it's not used. The other one being the culvert and or the bridge that goes over the stream at the town and county line for Cat's Elbow might be a little bit more interesting for you. Because, you know, we certainly cannot maintain an easement over a bridge that does not exist.
The the point being, not that we're maintaining it, no one's maintaining. The adjoining property owners can't stop people from using that laneway or whatever you want to call it after it is no longer a town road. No longer be a town road, no longer worked as a town road.
Great. A little, maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse here. That the Cat's Elbow road serves zero town or county residents. However, it is possible that there are a few households in our southern county that might use the road. Do you think that that would factor into?
Again, it it the the there's an abandonment which requires that the town, that the road is simply no longer used. It has no purpose as a town road in any respect. The qualified abandonment under subdivision two or paragraph two of section 205 of the highway law, that simply requires that the, in the opinion of the town superintendent of highways, it is no longer used or traveled by more than two vehicles per day. And if that's the case, a qualified abandonment can be can be done by the board and the superintendent of highways of both the town and the county.
Great, thank you, Frank.
And Frank, how's that? That means it's an automatic given if it's been out since August 14th of 2018. It's we're pushing on three, we're we're working almost on three years, and there hasn't been a physical that be.
Sorry, what? I I didn't catch all of that.
Yeah, in in the case of Cat's Elbow, a car hasn't crossed that bridge or culvert since August 14th 2018. So there'd be no precedent for EGR.
For that. I think the, I think the way to look at it is, is you're not abandoning the whole road. You're only abandoning from Marsh Road to the bridge. So you'd be making the rest of Seneca Road a dead-end road.
Got you.
So really, you're not abandoning the whole road. You're just doing from Marsh Road to the bridge and then making it a dead-end road and have to make a turnaround down there someplace at the bottom.
But that's going to be the question. The question's got to be whether this falls within section 205.1 or 205.2. And if the fact is that you've got a piece of, you've got a roadway that is used by no one and has been used by no one for the past two years, then you may be able to fall under section one or paragraph one of section 205, which would allow a total abandonment.
Great. So it sounds like we're in pretty good shape, and I suspect that you'll keep us informed as as you get on with it, Frank.
Well, you've got a resolution right now directing us to go forward with that. I'll be in touch with the well, I mean, I'll undoubtedly have to talk with with county highway superintendent. Is it is it still Roy? I thought Roy retired.
Roy retired, but he's still retained. I'm not sure if he actually has the title of highway superintendent. Trevor might know.
He's interned. He's he's serving as an intern highway superintendent, yes.
Yep, so he is. He's your guy.
If he's the highway superintendent, then again, he's going to have to join in this. But I'm going to have, we're going to have to talk about exactly what the status of that road is. If whether it falls under us, paragraph one or paragraph two, because those are two different things. So I got to have those discussions shortly with the with the with the highway superintendent.
He said the same thing about you. He said, I thought he retired. You guys can't quit. That's all right.
There's retirement, and then there's retirement, I guess.
Thank you, Frank. We appreciate it. Does anybody else have any questions for Frank? Great, thank you. So up next is an item for discussion. This is for property tax exemptions for seniors and disabled folks. This is a local law that we passed on at the county level. This gives county landowners. I want to make sure I say this right. County landowners that are seniors and disabled that have incomes under $31,900, a property tax exemption from anywhere between 5% to 50%. I believe, I'm not looking at the law in front of me, but I think it's around $21,000 or below that qualifies you for a 50% reduction. And frankly, that tax exemption, the burden is just simply shifted to non-disabled and nonseniors. So the rest of the folks in the county pick up the tab for the tax exemption. So when this was passed, we were all encouraged, all the supervisors on the board were encouraged to pass this at our local towns. That was highly recommended by financial, by the financial chair, Reynolds, and by Jim Clear, who serves the Board of Supervisors, but also is the uh, Jim Clear, who serves as the board of supervisors, um, but also is uh, the assessor up in Waterloo. So uh, it, what I've sent to you um, is a mirror image of the county law, um, which was just enacted and has not, you know, had the applications and the exemptions go into effect yet. So I just wanted to put it down here as an item to make us all aware, um, sort of check in to see is, with each of you to see if this is something that we should uh, go forward and investigate. Um, and if so, you know, what course do you recommend uh, in doing so? So is there anybody who feels anything about this? All right, then I'll call on you. Seth, you brought up some issues with me on the phone. You want to go through some of those issues?
Um, yeah, I, I would just, um, I kind of would like to wait and see how this plays out at the town level in other towns who especially, I guess, over there already adopted it. Um, I'm all for helping out, um, folks who need help. Um, but I would like to have an idea of how it's going to affect um, the tax base, like how many, because I, I guess, uh, I mean, I've heard that especially a town like Lodi, like there's a lot of people on fixed income, so there might be a lot of people who are um, eligible for this. Um, so just, I'd like to see, yeah, I'd like to see how things turn out in the other towns and how much of a um, tax change there is for, for property tax, um, for everyone else. It might be that a lot of people don't really take advantage of this. It might be that a lot of people take advantage of it and it um, hikes taxes for everyone else. Um, so I, yeah, I, I'm, I'd like to, I'd like to wait and see at least a year.
I think I can agree with that. We're, you know, we're tied up really hard with the National Forest. Um, we, we, we don't get any funding from that. Um, I agree with Seth. If this is something that we can hold off to see how other people doing, if they're, they're making out, uh, that might be something to look into. If this isn't something that we have to pass right away, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions and they're very good points that uh, Seth is bringing up.
Agreed, agreed. Uh, Mr. Batman, Mr. Latini, any, any thoughts?
Well, isn't there a way that we could, uh, well, I don't know how much work is involved. I don't know what kind of figures exist out there to uh, determine the uh, you know, to determine, to take a look at the incomes of people in the town and just try to get an idea of what it would mean for us to not have, uh, to lose um, those taxes.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we have an avenue to investigate incomes because that is self-reported um, by the applicants to this exemption. Um, so you know, we don't have a database of incomes. You know, the only way to accomplish that would be through an income survey, um, which is possible. Uh, I think the other avenue, if this board wanted to investigate more is, you know, essentially we would call in our experts to these meetings to, to tell us more. We'd call in uh, our assessor to give us an idea and some assumptions about how many folks might qualify and how many folks might apply. We could call in the county real property tax uh, officials and they could give us similar information. Um, so there are a couple of ways to investigate and we can do that casually. Um, over time as we watch, uh, you know, as we watch what happens. Um, so what we don't know, I'm seeing a question come up in the chat right now that says, isn't there a way to find out what our tax increase will be before we vote on this? Um, there's, there's not. So if one person in Lodi applies for the exemption and their tax bill is cut in half, that half of that tax bill would be distributed between the rest of the, the taxpayers. If a hundred people apply for it, um, then obviously there's that much more in the pool that would have to be covered. So without knowing how many people would apply for the exemption, um, we don't have a true idea of what it would cost. Now, at the county level, they made some assumptions um, based on eligibility and applications to other programs and they came up with some, some rough assumptions. Um, so if we want to continue investigating, I think it probably gets, well, I'll, I'll say some better numbers, but some numbers at all.
Other than lack of knowledge, I can see that I don't under, I wouldn't understand why people wouldn't apply for it, being that it's a benefit to them. So I would assume that most people probably would do that. That's just an assumption, I guess.
Yeah, my guess would be if they don't apply for it, it's either because they don't know about it or they're very protective about their income data. Like my father, my father, for whatever, you know, stentsis will come in the mail and he'll say, no, I'm not telling them anything and I don't know why. But that's how he is. Um, you know, for the county, I think this is, this is, this makes sense because their tax base is so large that I think the, the county tax increase on those that share the burden probably would be um, fairly negligible. For us, um, we're a much smaller town and
We're in a different situation.
Yeah, we have, I, I think we have a higher degree of inequality in our town between the folks who are income limited and then maybe are more uh, wealthy landowners. So it might actually hit some of our landowners a little harder. And then of course, as Seth mentioned, we have a high percentage of fixed incomes, um, which translates to social security recipients, which makes them likely eligible. So we might have um, more than, than most other towns would have. Um, I did like what Seth said, that we should, you know, sort of wait a year and see how it plays out on the county and the town level. Um, but in my, my instinct here says we've identified an issue here in Lodi where folks are really having a hard time because of their, their limiting income and here's a program that helps them. So I, I, I'm weighing it pretty heavy because it does seem like this is something that would help folks that need help.
Well, most definitely.
Yeah, I would, I would say that if there's any way that we can make this work, I would like to see it work. But I also understand figure a good idea to just step back right now.
So, sorry, Paul, did not mean to interrupt you. So should we take a wait and see approach and not take any action? Um, and, and wait nine or 10 months to see how this shakes out? Or should we take a sort of a, a dual approach where we do that, but we also engage with, say, the assessor and uh, real property to see if we can get some better numbers? Does anybody have a preference?
Well, if we wanted to get this process started sooner, I think the sooner we can get to those numbers, the quicker this might be able to be put into play. So I think in, in my opinion, that would be the best way to go.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with that.
Okay. So I'll, I'll uh, reach out over the next month, uh, with no, no rush, um, for them to sort of start collecting things and keeping an eye out for data that might be helpful to to developing this. And if I get anything, I'll throw it back on the agenda and we'll continue the discussion.
Seth, what do you think about that? Seeing as all you brought up some concerns?
Yeah, I'm never going to argue against having more information. Um, I, I don't know how much is going to become clear, um, before taxes are collected next year. Um, I mean, I guess they will have applications, so that'll give us an idea of, of what's going on, but I wouldn't be surprised if a program like this takes a year or two to really, you know, catch on in the community because some people will do it right away and then they'll tell their friends about it who didn't know about it. So, um, yeah.
I, I would be su- surprised if we didn't start getting calls next year when people start seeing their county bill cut in half and still seeing themselves getting a full town tax bill. I wouldn't be surprised if we got a couple of calls. People are prob, I bet you people are already thinking that if they apply for the county exemption, they automatically get the town one. So it'll be interesting, I think. Any uh, other comments or questions? Very well. That's all I have for new business tonight. Does anybody else have any new business? How about anybody from the public? We have another period here for public comment. Does anybody have any uh, questions or comments? Uh, Michael, I think that's you at Cottage Views. Uh, I hope I answered your question. Anybody else?
I have um, a couple of things. Maybe it's bouncing back to the clerk report. I received voicemail from David Ahouse and he has found a couple individuals because of the ad that is um, interested in joining the planning board. He did not give the names to me, but he would like to introduce those people to the board. Okay?
Great. Yes, we heard you. Thank you, Connie. Um, a letter, can you hear me, Connie?
Yeah.
A letter of interest is always, I think, um, the appropriate way to indicate that interest. Um, would you like me to get ahold of David and, and hash that out?
Um, if you would like to, I could uh, reiterate it for you if you wanted me to as well.
Yeah, if you could just let him know to either send us a letter with some, with people's names or to have those people send a letter, that would be great. Or an email. Email works too.
And then secondly, I just wanted to mention from the clerk's office, this kind of piggybacks off Seth's solar farm. I have noticed over the last couple of months, the increased volume of solar companies seeking out foil requests, secret studies, haunting me about um, unpaid property taxes and available farmland from those big solar companies. So I think they're a bit closer and seeking us out a little stronger as um, the time I've spent here in the office, the normal zoning questions are, is can I put up a shed too? But over the last couple of months, there's been a gigantic increase of those solar farms for the town of Lodi as they're interested in farm property. Um, so I just wanted to mention that on the piggyback that we are seeing that increased volume of interest for solar farms.
That's good information, Connie. You know, that's, that's good to know that you're, um, that you're getting that. I, you know, I don't have a position one way or another, but it's getting a little concerning that we, you know, don't have a, a process in place to even evaluate um, any of these projects or anything that happens. So, um, I won't, I won't cuss on camera, but there are probably some things we should consider surrounding that.
Yeah.
I will say that I sent the planning board memo, um, that, that we discussed last month with our items that this board identified as high priority items. Um, I asked Connie to mail those out. Um, so the planning board should have the details that they need and um, I've been informed that there is a planning board meeting coming up. They did not give a date yet. I think one of the members is having an issue um, with virtual meetings doing Zoom, so they're trying to work through that. There should be a meeting soon. Uh, any other public comment? Any other questions for this board before we call it a night? Our next meeting will be April eighth. Um, I, we did not discuss coming back from Zoom yet and going back to in-person, so uh, we will ride with another Zoom meeting, but if anybody has any uh, feelings about that over the next month, please let me know and we can put it on the agenda to discuss going back to live meetings. So next month, April eighth, uh, seven PM online via Zoom. That is our next meeting. With that, are there any other motions from the floor? That's my question to you guys. If somebody wants to make the motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Sibley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.